We will start the meeting as soon as PC Media starts. Welcome, everyone, to the Tuesday, January 17th, 2023 Tomato City Council meeting. We will start with roll call.
Councilmember Leeta Dahlhoff. Councilmember Angela Jefferson.
Present.
Councilmember Joan Cathy.
Present.
Councilmember Eileen Swardout.
Present.
Councilmember Michael Othouser.
Present.
Councilmember Peter Agabe.
Present.
Councilmember Charlie Schneider.
Present.
And Mayor Debbie Sullivan.
I'm present. Thank you. All right. Next is pledge to Legion, pledge, flag salute, I'm sorry, and follow me in our pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Perfect. Okay, so we have one special item, which is a proclamation for Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Councilmember Jefferson will provide the proclamation, but also she was able to read it at the Martin Luther King event yesterday. Unfortunately, we didn't have a meet first meeting, so we're just catching up now. So go ahead, Councilmember Jefferson.
Proclamation, whereas the civil rights movement in the 1960s profoundly impacted the course of American history and continues to shape the direction and debate of our society. And whereas Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., a civil rights leader, devoted his life to the nonviolent advancement of civil rights and public service. And whereas Dr. King believed in a nation of freedom and justice for all and challenged all community members to help build a more perfect union and live up to the purpose and potential of the United States of America. And whereas Dr. King's dream is no less inspirational and important today than when he first expressed it 60 years ago. And whereas even with the progress achieved during the civil rights movement and subsequent decades, inequities, injustices, racism, and other forms of discrimination and oppression are still prevalent in our society. And whereas Dr. King's life was struck down by a bullet of bigotry on April 4th, 1968, but his dream of pursuing a world free from prejudice and injustice lives on. And whereas we honor and celebrate Dr. King's memory, and importantly, we also preserve his legacy, one that calls upon all of us to stand up against injustice and protect our most sacred tenets of democracy. And whereas Dr. King always led by example and provided a framework for how each of us can shape the future by calling out injustice and continuing to work towards a more equitable society. Now therefore, Debbie Sullivan, Mayor of the City of Tomor, do hereby proclaim January 16, 2023, as Martin Luther King Jr. Day and urges people to join her and take this opportunity to reflect upon Dr. King's vision and rededicate ourselves to continuing to advance the principles of justice and equality for all. Signed in the City of Tomwater, Washington, and recognized on this 16th day of January in the year 2023. Signed, Debbie Sullivan, Mayor.
Thank you. And I believe we have an honored guest in our audience today. Thelma Jackson is here, and I would like to present you with the proclamation. And so I will have you come to the podium and I will meet you there.
Here's your copy of the proclamation. And we also give a token of a Tomwater pencil. And if there's anything that you would love to add, I would really appreciate that. Thank you very much for.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the Tomwater City Council. I'm delighted as well as honored to be here to receive this proclamation this evening on behalf of Reverend David L. Reeves and the New Life Baptist Church. We had a magnificent commemoration of Dr. Martin Luther King yesterday at our church as a citywide, community-wide gathering. It was our effort to reinsert a community-wide celebration of the life and legacy of this great man. And we were more than successful in our efforts. We attracted people from all over the county, and we were delighted to have the presence of the City of Tomwater people. Thurston County, City of Lacey, and City of Olympia also presented us with proclamations. And we are pleased to add this proclamation to that collection because we know that proclamations are important, but they are just words. And they're only words if there are no actions. And it is our desire to bring the Martin Luther King holiday back into perspective, not as only a day of service, but also a day where we remember and honor his life and legacy. When we think in terms of what we talk about today as DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion, Dr. King epitomized those values long before they had the names that they do now. When we think in terms of the times in which we live, the lack of unity, the kinds of things that are going on, institutional and individual racism, economic and healthcare inequities, miscarriages of justice, white supremacy ideology, assaults on democracy, political chaos, hatred, discrimination, miseducation, and misinformation, violence, conspiracy theories of all kind. We, as a society, are suffering from the fatigue of despair. And we look at this Martin Luther King opportunity for our community to come together. And I want to compliment Councilwoman Jefferson for her lead in bringing about this proclamation from the City of Tomwater that can be added to the three, the other two major cities and the county. As we look towards the future, as we look towards providing some leadership and some catalysts and some initiative to the community to begin to have those courageous conversations that everyone talks about, but no one convenes. So in 2023, we are making a new commitment as a black community, as the New Life Baptist Church, to provide some leadership to that effort. And we are most appreciative that the City of Tomwater will be a part of that effort as we move forward. Thank you so much for this proclamation. And again, on behalf of Reverend David L. Reeves, we appreciate the honor.
Thank you very much. With that, we will move to public comment. And we do have a public hearing tonight. So in public comment portion is for that that is not relevant to the public hearing. So this would be items separate from that. So do we have anyone signed up for public comment online?
We don't.
Okay. So then we will go to those who signed up in council chambers. Elsie Sable, first let me say that public comment is held to three minutes. There's a clock there. And they were usually do, this is the time for the public to talk to us, and we usually don't have dialogue. So if there's any follow-up, we'll send you as appropriate for follow-up. So go ahead and stand, come to the podium, state your name and your address for the record, and three minutes.
My name is Elsie Sable and my address is 2833 Calley Lane, Northwest Olympia. The National Academy of Sciences, in a worst-case scenario, projects a sea level rise of 78 inches by 2,100, which would result in a loss of 690,000 square miles of land, displacing 2.5% of the world's population. As our climate changes rapidly, our farms won't be able to support the same crops or sustain the same level of production. By 2050, 500,000 people could die from food insecurity as a direct result of climate change. According to the World Health Organization, climate change is estimated to kill 5 million people between 2030 and 2050, and 83 million by 2,100. When youth imagine our future, this is what we have to look forward to. In 2021, the members of the Tomwater City Council passed the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan, the TCMP, in response to the demands of many community members, ourselves included. We felt heard. We felt seen and understood. We thought that finally elected officials were taking action to protect our world. We were wrong. Passage of the TCMP means nothing if you take no steps toward implementation. Thus, we first demand that you draft and pass an implementation strategy. Second, prioritizing strong climate policy goes hand in hand with values of public health, equity, and a localized economy. It doesn't, however, go hand in hand with corporate greed. We demand that you deny Coca-Cola a 75-year lease on our water. In this time of increasing climate chaos, we don't know what the next 20 years will look like, let alone the next 75. Signing away our natural resources to a company that has been voted the worst plastic polluter in the world for five years running is not only idiotic, it makes it nearly impossible for you to reach the targets laid out in the TCMP. Sign this lease and it will prove yourselves untruthful and untrustworthy. Finally, along with your passage of the TCMP, you declared a climate emergency. We demand that you start acting like it. Develop emergency procedures and free up emergency funds. Our government was not built to act with the urgency the climate crisis demands. You must enact urgent structural change, or the people you claim to serve will suffer for it. Continue with business as usual, and there will be blood on your hands.
Thank you. Next person for comment is Chris Lester. Again, three minutes, name and address.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. My name is Chris Lester. I'm at 4134 107th Avenue, Southwest in Olympia. I'm just here to introduce myself as the Government Affairs Director for Thurston County Realtors Association. And we are here for you as housing relates, housing concerns and issues come up, we're here for discussion, help out. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next person signed up is Deborah Bowes and come to the podium, name and address in three minutes.
My name is Debbie Bowes, and I live in the Bridlewood neighborhood. This is in response to your update by email December 22nd on the proposed operations and maintenance facility at Trails Inn. The entire email is a shiny object. Pass the levy for the facility and you'll get a park and a roundabout and a sidewalk. The email mentions the dedication of land for a park. The 2017 Metropolitan Park Levy was passed for the purpose of a park, not to facilitate building your O and M facility. A quote used by city staff is there is general approval for the facility. No, there's general approval for a park, not your O and M. Your outreach to the media using this statement is manipulative. The sidewalks are another shiny object. Does the safety of your constituents only matter if the facility is built? Since 2014, hundreds of homes have been built in the surrounding neighborhoods. 79th Street is already a busy racetrack for the residents' sake. Sidewalks should be built, not for your facility's purpose. The roundabout is the third shiny object you promote. For years, residents have requested a roundabout at 79th and Old 99, excuse me, due to the heavy congestion at that site. It appears you are saying no O and M facility, no roundabout. The O and M will be moving from a four-acre site to six acres. As it is planned out, completely fills the space. The original goal was for 10 acres, now down to six. What is the long-term plan? Where you will, where will you expand in 10 to 20 years? There's no open space available. On January 3rd, 2023, I submitted a formal request to Public Records for any information relating to a feasibility study. The staff could find nothing. I had three examples of it being mentioned that I showed the clerk. The first was John Don's memorandum, December 9th, 2021. It described what the site requirements were and the four sites that were eliminated and why. So where is the information on the Trails Inn site? There must be records of the pluses and minuses of the Trails Inn site. The second was from the Open House Q and A. It states, "The city has completed many elements of the feasibility study. The results have not been compiled into a single feasibility study," end quote. Why not? Where are these notes? The third was an email from Mayor Sullivan, October 17th, 2022. It states, "Plans will be submitted for feasibility study, plan review, and CEPA reviews as part of the permitting process," end quote. Wouldn't it be wise to do this study before you spend your taxpayers' money? What if the study says it is not a feasible location? Why wait? Again, no records could be found. Is the city pushing forward on this facility without going through the proper channels? It appears you're using the park, a roundabout, and sidewalks as leverage to pass a levy. It's the City of Tomwater that wants the operation and maintenance facility at Trails Inn, not the many residents it will impact. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Our next person on the list is Mary Prior, and again, three minutes. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mary Prior. I live at 1615 Derby Lane in the Bridlewood neighborhood. And I am also the HOA Vice President of the Bridlewood neighborhood, which is directly across the street from the proposed operations and maintenance facility. I share the concerns that I hear from many of our residents. My understanding is that Tomwater voters passed a levy to pay for a park on the Trails Inn site. This did not include the O and M facility, roundabout, or even sidewalks. We wonder why, years after passing the original park levy, which has already been voted on, it is now included with these other projects. It seems intentionally deceiving to include an already approved project with others that are somewhat questionable. Did you mislead the voters to get a partial payment when asked to vote on the park? Or are you misleading us now by appearing to make these distinctly different projects a package deal, even though the funding for the park is already voter-approved? I too asked for a copy of the feasibility study, or at least the components that were done if the complete study is not available. I too was told there is no feasibility study. I've been involved in and with different levels of government for many years. And if a feasibility study requirement is a law, is at least a minimum standard practice, how can you approve a maintenance facility without investigating its impact on the more than 800 homes that will inevitably be affected by at this location? I have never heard of having thousands of dollars invested in design without an accurate assessment of the feasibility. The other concern is the lack of consistency. Initially, I was told that the O and M facility would be on the six acres of the west, on the west side of Trails Inn Drive, and the park would be on the entire 16 acres on the east side of the street. At the May Community Meeting, Chuck Danny and Ann Cook both assured me that the entire 16 acres would be parked, some finished and groomed, and some walking trails. I asked about parking, as did many others, and we were told there would be no parking at the, on that, on the park side of the street because parking was not a standard for neighborhood parks. Later, looking at plans, they had drawn in a part in parking for up to 100 vehicles. After another call, I was assured it wouldn't be more than 50, but still no clarification on whether that number is firm or even if it includes the heavy equipment or employee parking from the O and M facility. Finally, it should be an indication to everyone that this is not the right site for an O and M because of the additional cost of the building they are designing, so the vehicles won't have to back up, thus avoiding the loud backup beeps that all admit would disturb the nearby residents. What we want is a much more in-depth study by an outside agency before proceeding with the O and M facility. The council needs to show us voters that they are proceeding in good faith by getting started on the park that has already been financed by the voters. And we want clear and open communication. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Carlo Wolfsburg.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Carlo Wolfsburg, and I live at 709 North 7th Avenue, Southwest in Tomwater. And first, I'm here tonight in support of these young people. They have great commitment, and I would hope that we could all model, you could model for all of us, their commitment to the climate and to the well-being of all of us in Thurston County and our planet. But I'm also here for two other issues, one of which that they address, which I will comment on in a moment. But I want to bring to your attention my concerns and many people in the community who are concerned about basically your stewardess, stewardness of our environment and our quality of life here in Tomwater. And one of these issues has to do with the Port of Olympia's Olympia Regional Airport. So as you might know, every 10 years, the airport goes through a master plan update, and they are currently in that process. I ask that you scrutinize this update because it has great detrimental effects, potential, great detrimental effects on Tomwater. For one thing, the airport staff and director are really dismissing public concerns, saying that we have misinformation. But if you scrutinize the way we have the airport master plan of 2013, you will see that there is a potential for 630 operations at the airport per day. Now, when they say operations, they mean takeoffs and landings at our airport, of which is very close to where we are tonight, and many residents live nearby. What does this actually do to our community? Well, first of all, there is the noise issue, which we already have. And then there's the pollution issue because planes continue to use leaded diesel fuel. This is a very strong public health risk. And the airport is really downplaying this whole entire issue. They don't want us to believe that they could do this. They may not do it tomorrow. The increase may not be for a little while, but there is the potential. So it really undermines the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan that has been adopted. And I ask you all to really take a good look at this master plan update because it affects all of us in Tomwater, as well as the whole South Sound community. Just the, it's really a dangerous situation. And the other thing that I wanted to bring up was what these young people are here tonight about, and that is the Swire Coca-Cola plant. This is another lease that I ask you all to scrutinize. If you haven't read it, you would, you wouldn't know that that Coca-Cola plant may not even be a Coca-Cola plant. It could be anything. They can assign it to another company. Who knows what could happen? It's a huge facility, huge facility. And it's on airport property, but it does involve Tomwater. It involves our water. It involves our quality of life, pollution, et cetera, et cetera. And I'm out of time. So thank you very much.
Thank you. So those were all the public comments on the list. Is there anyone else who was not, who did not sign up that has anything to present that is not regarding the public hearing this evening? Go ahead and come to the, state your name and your address.
Hello, I'm Sheldon Watson. I live over on 3415 Amherst, and that's in Olympia. Let's talk about, oh, we can talk about a lot of things. We can talk about that flag and pledging allegiance to it. It sure means not a lot. It means something about security. It means all kinds of things. Now, there's this thing called an airport, and I'll follow up with that. When we went to the Port Commission on the 28th of November, there was a Swire Coca-Cola company representative, put on a wonderful presentation. They wanted to build an air Coca-Cola bottling plant. Oh, well and good. Lease comes along. I look into it, the largest Coca-Cola bottling plant in the world, 667,000 square feet in Ireland. The lease goes out for 4,200,000 square feet. That's about six, maybe seven times as large, six times as large. What you can do with 4 million square feet, you can divide that by 10,000. 10,000 goes into that about 400 times. What you can do with that is put in a 10,000-foot runway, 400 feet wide. That runway will be able to handle cargo aircraft and wide-bodied aircraft. The standard for that is 8,000 square feet, or 8,000 feet in length at sea level. The company that has that lease now, Swire Pacific, when it was presented to us, they were talking about being a provo Utah. Well, that was all well and good on the 12th of December, but on the 14th of December, the lease comes out and it says, Swire Land Incorporated. Remember that 28th day? Swire Land was incorporated in Delaware on 29 November. That means that being in Delaware, that's a great place for tax savings. That's a great place for concealing the true owner of the property. Now, that company, Swire Pacific, well, it's listed on the Hong Kong Stock Exchange. That's part of the Communist China, our geopolitical rival. So we have some pretty serious issues coming along here. We don't really know what Swire Pacific is going to do, but I invite you to go onto their website. What they will say there is, once they build out a company, they pull out of that and reinvest. But the curious thing about them is, 38,000 personnel worldwide, they are a holding company. Swire Coca-Cola in this country is a subsidiary. So is Swire Cathay, well, Cathay Pacific Airlines, that is also subsidiary. They own 51% of that, almost 55%. They also have aviation maintenance assets, over 67% control of that. I think it's pretty clear what the long-term goal is, and that gets into the airport master plan that Ms. Wolfsburg talked to you about. That flag over there, people pledge allegiance to it, but that gets into protection, that gets into democracy. This code of mine, I didn't buy it of goodwill. I've spent my life defending that flag, taking care of the national security. When you start talking about a foreign country coming in and buying assets, they have to put, they have to put in a request for that through something called Committee on Foreign Investment in the United States. That's run through Treasury, and what that does is assess a company to see what national security threats it might pose. Of course, if you're registered in Delaware, where you don't really know who they are, that's a problem.
Thank you.
I thank you for your time.
All right. Anyone else? All right. Thank you. So the next item we will go to is the consent calendar. Do I hear a motion for the consent calendar?
Mayor, can I pull item G, please?
All right. All right. So is everyone else in agreement with pulling G? We'll discuss it at the end. All right. So do I hear a motion for revised consent calendar?
So move. This is Leeta.
I'll second him.
All right. It's been moved by Leeta and seconded by, sorry, moved by Councilmember Dahlhoff and seconded by Councilmember Snyder to revise the consent agenda, removing number G, which is the grant agreement with the Department of Ecology for Septic and Sewer Conversion Program. We will put that under council considerations at the end of this meeting. All right. With that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All right, motion carries. So with that, we have approved minutes of the City Council meeting for December 6, 2022. Approval of the minutes for City Council Joint Planning Commission. Approval of the minutes for City Council Joint Planning Commission meeting with the council for December 13. We also approve the minutes of the City Council Work Session from December 13. And ordinance number O 2023-001 to update the Tom Water Municipal Code Title IX Criminal Code. Also, resolution number R 2023-002 adopting amended City Council Rules and Procedures. Grant Agreement with the Department of Ecology for SM CMAP Water Storm Basin Planning. Grant Agreement with the Department of Ecology for Golf Course Parking Lot Stormwater Retrofit Design. Service Provider Agreement with Homes First for Affordable Housing. And I see we have a representative from Homes First here. Service Provider Agreement with Centec for the Pioneer Park Repairian Restoration Amendment. Service Provider Agreement with HDR Engineering for Corrosion Control Study Amendment 1. Service Provider Agreement with Summit Towing for Towing Services Amendment 3. Service Provider Agreement with Greer Environmental Consulting for Project Management Service Amendment Number 2. Service Provider Agreement with Skills Inc. for Golf Course Parking Lot Stormwater Retrofit Design. Service Provider Agreement with SCJ Alliance for the Capitol Boulevard Trossford Road Intersection Improvement. Project Fourth Amendment, Solo Smart Solar Statement. Local Agency Hall Road Detour Agreement with Washington State Department of Transportation for I-5 US 101 Deschutes Parkway, northbound off-ramp. 2023 City Council Meeting Work Session, Meeting Schedule with Summer Recess. 2023 Long Range Planning and Work Program. American Chestnut Heritage Tree Nomination. An Appointment of Joel Hecker and Joe Maruno for the Parks Board and Recreation Commit Commission. So this is what happens when you don't have a meeting for a month, and you have a lot of meetings that work on work sessions. So I also see that we have Homes First here. So, and then do we have the new appointees for the new commission members in attendance? I don't think so. So do you want to just go ahead and say a couple of words?
Hi, I'm Trudy Sukup. I'm the CEO at Homes First, and we are already in a partnership to convert an empty home on Henderson Boulevard into a home for women. Six women will share that home who are in recovery in partnership with the Oxford House International Program. I also want to say my, two of my, actually three of my board members are here tonight, other than me. And Chris Lester is on our board. Mary Roberts was on virtually. I think she may have disappeared. And Leeta Dahlhoff also serves on our Board of Directors. So thank you very much for all your support in this project. This next segment that you've just approved is doing a septic-to-sewer conversion, which we're very excited for. You can't really have six women sharing a house on a small septic tank. It'll be great to have them. And so thank you again for your support on this project. It's a step-by-step. It feels like it's been going on a really long time, but it takes time to do housing. So thank you for your continued support.
Thank you. And I also see former Mayor Pete Comett, who is also very instrumental in making this happen. So I want to recognize him. All right. So with that, we're going to move to public hearing. And first, I want to say thank you to the young people who showed up this evening. Public hearing is on resolution R 2023-001 in support of the Olympia-Tom Water Fire Authority Proposal. And John Doan will start the presentation.
Great, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm here on behalf of the city, but also on behalf of our fire department and Chief Hurley, who could not be here today. In 2019, the city, working with five other fire jurisdictions in our area, completed an assessment of fire and emergency medical services in this region, and it came forward in 2019 and recommended some measures of consolidation and regionalization would be appropriate for the jurisdictions to consider. In May of 2021, Olympia and Tom Water entered into an inter-local agreement to study the formation of what's called a regional fire authority. It is a type of fire organization allowed by state law. An RFA planning committee was comprised of three council members from each jurisdiction, as well as fire chief and labor representatives as non-voting members. The planning committee met about twice a month since then to formulate a proposal that came forward to public hearings and to the City Council. A joint City Council meeting was held on October 25, 2022 to review the proposed plan, as well as there were several community town hall meetings. The RFA planning committee met on November 14, 2022, and after a public hearing, the committee recommended adoption of the Olympia-Tom Water RFA plan by each city council. On December 6, joint resolution R 2022-014 was adopted by the Olympia and the Tom Water City Councils approving the Olympia-Tom Water Regional Fire Authority Plan, and that it would be placed before the voters April 25, 2023. State law allows the city council to take a collective action on a proposed ballot measure, following an opportunity for those in support or opposed to that ballot proposition to speak. Hence, we have provided public hearing notice for this meeting. The City of Olympia is doing the exact same thing at their council meeting this evening. And following that, staff would recommend that, as we have said in the staff report, that you conduct this hearing, and then you adopt resolution R 2023, expressing the collective decision to support proposition number one on that ballot in April. Are there any questions for me before we start?
Any questions? All right. With that, I will go ahead and open up the public comment portion of the public hearing. And do we have anyone signed up online?
We do. We have one, Walt Jorgensen.
Okay. So are you able to hear us, Mr. Jorgensen?
Hello?
Hi. So go ahead and say your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Sound here?
We can hear you.
Okay, good. My, my name is Walt Jorgensen. I live at 823 North Street. And I have actually benefited greatly from the quick arrival and the expertise of the Tom Water Fire Department on more than one occasion. Every few years, PSE ignites another one of my trees, and that's after the squirrels are done chewing on the wires. But, and actually, actually, after just listening to Carla Wolfsburg and the gentleman who followed her, I can see you have lots of other stuff on your plate to take care of, but, but to the fire issue. Excuse me, there are a raft of things I do not understand about the fire authority ballot proposition. And they are not technical issues, but matters of data and logic. That doesn't mean they aren't complex. Over, over 90%, and best estimates are actually 96, 97, of the emergency calls we, and that'd be, in this case, us, the city, receive for help are for medical service rather than fire. So why do we most often dispatch fire engines instead of ambulances? Why don't we have more medical aid vehicles? Why are medical aid vehicles usually not staffed with a medical doctor or other medical professional? And how are the medical aid vehicles positioned around the city to maximize coverage? Or in other words, minimize response time? Excuse me, how does the, and based on that same proposition that, that the calls are for medical rather than fire, how does the new fire charge reflect the level of emergency medical services that a particular location, that would be residential home, business, government facility, whatever, may need? So far, it seems that all the elements in the equation are for fire stuff. And I've, I've never, and don't ever expect to hear a rationale for using the square root as a factor. I appreciate that I've asked several questions. I'll be glad to submit them in writing. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else online?
No.
Okay. So we'll go to those present in council chambers. First person on the list is Brad Ridgeway. Come and state your name and your address.
My name's Brad Ridgeway. Address 9220 Jennifer Lane Northwest Olympia, Washington. Thanks for the opportunity to talk. I appreciate what Walt had to say. Walt's, Walt's not wrong. We could use more aid units, and we could, we could use more EMS personnel. And we do have to respond in fire engines with crews of three because we, we just have two-staffed fire engines in town. And, well, we can't leave one at home if there's a medical call, and then the next call happens to be a car wreck or a gas leak or structure fire or rescue. One of those things that we have all the tools and equipment in that big engine for. So we would love to respond in a more efficient manner. We just don't have the resources to do it, nor do the people. And I know it's confusing for many people in the community. This is where the fire authority comes into play. Right now, we're stuck working, fighting for general fund money during budget cycle. We put in a request. We do everything we can to justify our needs. Don't laugh at me, Leeta. And, and we're in competition against law enforcement. And we're in competition against parks, and we're in competition against all the staff that works in City Hall, and that often feels really unfair. We are a priority, so are roads, so is law enforcement, so is everything else the community needs. There's a max tax cap, max tax cap for city government. And we're going to be pushing up against that if we want to maintain all these standards that we're accustomed to in the city, or get to a point where we could respond as Walt suggested. Pulling us out into a fire authority is an opportunity to take us out of city government's finances, give us our own fiscal autonomy, and have the potential to grow and respond as the community desires in the future. I understand that the FBC, the fire benefit charge, has a calculation to it, and it has distracted some people. It's a common equation that's used in insurance through the United States and every other fire authority that uses an FBC in Washington State. And while I'd be, if you're still listening, I'd be happy to sit down and talk with you because I think there's a lot that we could both learn about each other. I'm asking you guys to support this. I've been a firefighter here for over about 25 years when I signed up as a volunteer. Since the day I started, we've been talking about countywide coming together as a metro community. This is the first, first step, I believe, in something that's grander, that will better serve the whole county someday. And it'll definitely help the citizens of Tom Water tremendously. Thank you for your time. I know I impressed you.
Thank you.
25 seconds left.
Thank you. Next person is Pete Comett, coming to the podium.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members, council members. Again, I'm Pete Comett, former mayor of Tom Water, and I'm here to speak in favor of resolution 2023-01 endorsing proposition one and creating a regional fire authority. We're at a critical time in the history of our fire departments. Response times are up. Our firefighters are working longer hours, and they need new equipment. Creating a regional fire authority urging Olympia and Tom Water will help address these needs. Over the years, I've seen our fire department respond to small fires and medical emergencies in our neighborhood, very large fires, like the one that occurred at the brewery not too long ago, and many vehicle crashes in our community. I've watched our firefighters and medics handle these calls professionally and with compassion. People in our community are relying more and more on the fire department, not just to put out fires, but as you've heard, also for the general welfare and health-related calls. In many ways, our fire departments have become the local doctor making house calls that are no longer done by doctors. The result is our fire and medical responses and costs are increasing faster than the overall general fund budget, competing with other city priorities, including a couple of the things that you acted on tonight, things like climate change response, tree protection, historic preservation, which you'll be taking up. All of these things are all general fund funded items in addition to the ones that Brad mentioned. What we're doing is not financially sustainable. Combining Tom Water and Olympia's fire departments makes sense and will provide us an opportunity for efficiencies. The funding package provided under this proposition will provide a diverse and sustainable funding source for fire and medical response. There's no increase in property taxes. City will reduce its tax by the amount that is used by the authority. The benefit charge, which has been talked about, is calculated using a method that's based on, as was mentioned, how insurance companies calculate fire risk. It's a common formula used by many fire departments throughout the Washington, and it's fair. Smaller houses and smaller businesses will pay less. Bigger houses, bigger businesses pay more. A regional fire authority will be more transparent and accountable to the voters, not buried in the city's budget. Let's provide our firefighters and medics the funding and the organizational structure they need to continue to do the great work that they're doing for our community. I urge you to support our firefighters and medics and vote in favor of resolution 2023-01 endorsing proposition one, creating a regional fire authority. Thank you.
Thank you. There's another name here, but it looks like it might be crossed out. Helen Risha? Okay. It was the wrong list, right? Okay, that's what I thought. Is there anyone else wanting to speak at the public comment portion of this? Not seeing any. I will close the public comment portion, and I will now turn to council on any discussion. Any questions? Any motions?
Mayor, let's move to adopt, approve, pass resolution number R 2023-001 in support of the Olympia-Tom Water Fire Authority Proposal.
I'll second. Okay, I'm not sure who went first. I will give it to Councilmember Swarthout. So it's been moved by Councilmember Dahlhoff, seconded by Councilmember Swarthout. Any discussion on the motion? Councilmember Kathy, did you have a?
I do. I wanted to have Councilman Dahlhoff restate it. What exactly is it we're, we as council tonight are required to vote on?
Thank you, Councilmember Kathy, for that opportunity to do it correct the second time. I am moving to.
I just didn't understand.
Moving to adopt resolution number R 2023-001 in support of the Olympia-Tom Water Fire Authority Proposal.
I guess, um, I thought that we were voting on whether we were going to put this on the, you know, on the ballot. Because we've already had a vote to, we've already had a vote on this. And so I'm, I'm just asking, what is this vote tonight specifically for? And if we can explain why we are voting again, it would be helpful. I've had those questions asked of me.
Okay.
Ask them, so.
I'll turn it over to Council, City Administrator John Doan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. On December 6 is when the councils of both Tom Water and Olympia voted to put the item on the ballot for April 25. So that, that is not before you. What is before you this evening is a resolution in support of that ballot measure. And this specific language in the, in the recommended action, and maybe this will help clarify it, is to adopt resolution R 2023-001 expressing the collective decision to support proposition number one concerning the formation of a regional fire authority to be known as the Olympia-Tom Water Fire Authority, and the adoption of its plan for governance operations. and the adoption of its plan for governance, operations and financing, including the imposition of a benefit charge, which will be presented to the voters in conjunction with the April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three special election. So under Washington state law, you are generally prohibited, prohibited from taking a position on a ballot measure. However, there is a provision that allows you to take a collective action, meaning the majority of the body supports an action relative to a ballot measure, once you've provided an opportunity for those in support and those opposed to speak to the matter. And so that's what has been, um, on your agenda this evening, is that public hearing affording people that opportunity. And now before you, you have an opportunity to take that collective action.
So we're taking a collective action and I, um, we're taking a collective action to endorse this measures that will be on the ballot. Is that correct?
Correct.
Uh, Madam Mayor, I would request that we do this by voice vote. So if anybody has any comments they want to make, they can do that.
Uh, well, I can count, ask for council comments before the vote. Um, so I can certainly do a roll call vote.
Oh, I, I'll just make a comment now. Um, when, when we had the first vote, I mentioned that I was voting in favor, but very, very reluctantly. And I still feel the same way. Still feel that there are questions we have not answered for the community. And, uh, this benefit charge is, um, is one of the things and, um, and also the fact that what we're actually also creating with this is, um, a taxing district, you know, it, it's not a property tax, but the, the community is going to be taxed for this service. And all, these are questions that, uh, and maybe I, I just haven't understood some of the asking of questions and the answers we've received. But, um, and I didn't know we were going to have to take another vote because I've been anxiously awaiting, hearing the voice of the people, uh, through the, the voting of, of the, you know, putting this on the ballot. And I'm still looking forward to that. And whatever that is, I'm, um, wholeheartedly going to support that and work toward making, if they vote in favor, making it work, making it happen. And if they vote against, trying to go back and figuring out what to do. But, um, I want to say that I am still reluctantly voting for this and think we still have a lot of communication work, uh, left to do.
Thank you. Uh, council member Dahlhoff, did you have?
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor. Yeah. Councilmember Kathy, I just want to say, as always, I appreciate your concerns and I appreciate that you're bringing them up because they are concerns, they are valid. And I feel like what has been performed and conducted and worked on and presented is addressing those, right? And we can continue to have those conversations. And so you reminded me, I made a couple of notes, um, of what we do on the dais here, right? The policy work. And I always, I kind of break it down to four things of what I'm looking for is that we're creating belonging, that we're cultivating relationships, right? And that can be adapted and modified to whatever subject. And that we identify new opportunities and efficiencies and we design our future. So the last two really sit with me regarding coming up with a regional solution to avoid critical mass, right? And it's always going to be an evolution and continuous improvement. But I do feel like this planning committee with your input and Councilmember Schneider had great questions, Councilmember Jefferson had great questions, Councilmember Agabi had great questions. I feel along with the planning committee had great questions as well. Um, but we identified the root of the challenges by listening to the experts, listening to those who are on the roads, right? And dealing this and dealing with the burnout and dealing with, um, everything they see. I don't even know how they do it, right? Utmost respect. So taking that, identifying those problems and trying to find a solution. And this is the solution that we have come up with. Is it perfect? Nothing's perfect, right? But I feel we owe it to our community to design a better future with better efficiencies. So this is what we presented. So I appreciate your comments, Jen, and I appreciate your support and your vote yes.
Any other comments before I call for the vote? All right. With that, I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those who pose nay. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, everyone. All right. Next item on the agenda is under council considerations and it's resolution number R twenty twenty-two dash oh one three. And it's the Tomwater Cowlets Trail. And Chuck Denny will go ahead and present.
Thank you, Mayor Sullivan. Happy to be here. Happy to be here in person. This is my first time back in person to the council in a long time. Uh, my, my part is very brief tonight. Uh, we are coming to you asking for adoption of a resolution to add the Cowlets Trail section to the Oregon Trail system. Uh, this is a project that started, uh, maybe kind of small as an idea in the historic commission, uh, was talked about for a while until we, uh, developed a resolution. It was passed by the historic commission and forwarded to the general government committee, uh, for consideration. Uh, after a few minor word changes there, it was forwarded from G G C to you, uh, with a recommendation for adoption. Uh, tonight we have, uh, Dave McAndry, former city council member and current historic commissioner here with us to speak a little bit more to this. Dave is certainly far more eloquent than I in talking on historical issues. Uh, happy to have him here tonight. I'll, I will be here if you have questions for me. Uh, but with that, I would introduce Dave to talk about the resolution.
Great, thank you.
Mayor, remember the members of the council, it's a pleasure to see you all here. Uh, it's a pleasure to be here. Just as a moment of personal reflection, I was on the design committee for this building built in the nineteen eighties. First elected to the Tomwater City Council in nineteen, see, would be an odd year, right? Nineteen seventy-seven. That's seeming like a long time ago now, as you can tell from all this gray hair. So, um, I had the, uh, Chuck's, uh, uh, administrative history that sets this up. And I'd like to continue in that vein. The resolution pretty much speaks for itself in terms of historical narrative, but I'd like to put it into a context of what's the, what's the outcome? And how might this help? So the national trail system was a Lyndon Johnson Great Society legacy idea. First proposed in nineteen sixty-five, I think in Johnson's State of the Union address that year. Uh, Secretary of the Interior Stuart Udall, a great conservationist in American history, tasked the Bureau of Outdoor Recreation, as it was then known, to conduct a nationwide feasibility study, which resulted in a document called Trails for America, published in December of nineteen sixty-six. It had several recommendations, some initial ideas for national trails. You would all be familiar with the Pacific Coast Trail. I'd be shocked if Councilmember Elthouser hasn't walked the entire length of it. Am I right or am I wrong about that? Much of it?
Not, not yet.
Oh, okay. Well, it's, it's out there. Uh, the Lewis and Clark Trail, with which I also have some professional history, was also among the original uh, concepts. And in nineteen sixty-eight, the National Trails System Act was enacted into public laws by, as a federal statute. In nineteen seventy-seven, the Oregon Trail was recognized on paper, as it were, um, when a specific route study was conducted for inclusion as a national trail component. Another B O R study settled on, and this is kind of the key policy context, the notion of one primary route for the Oregon Trail. Limited chronologically even further between eighteen forty-one to about eighteen forty-eight because the California Gold Rush was such a transformative effect, starting of course with the infamous forty-niners. And I'm referring to the people going to the gold mines, not the football team that beat the Seahawks. Basic bottom line was there were too many braids, it was thought, in the Oregon Trail. So the historians and the B O R settled on the, the one primary route scheme. And in nineteen seventy-eight, November tenth, in fact, Public Law ninety-five six twenty-five, uh, created the National Historic Trails Act. That's because what became, there were some trails that were in the previous act. National Historic Trails were called out separately, uh, in this section. And to recognize the Oregon Trail from Independence, Missouri to Oregon City, Oregon. And in the meantime, Visitor Centers grew up in Independence, Council Bluffs, Casper, Wyoming, Maupeli or Idaho. Many of you have probably been to the one that were seen or heard of the one in Baker City, Oregon, which is the best of the lot. And there was, there's also one in Oregon City. But by the late nineteen nineties, getting to the point of the resolution, it began, uh, there was an emerging awareness that the single primary route construct of the original B O R s- uh, structure, um, was eliminated many important trail variants from consideration and recognition. Uh, three of them, in fact, are in the state of Washington. We're here to talk about the one that would be most important to us. That is what is commonly known as the Cowlets Trail, the Puget Sound, which the Bush Simmons party conducted here, to here in eighteen forty-five. As part of a, uh, National Park Service Trail update in nineteen ninety-nine, the National Park Service Solicitor General, this is my last page of notes, in case you're wondering how far I'm going. Uh, noted in a legal opinion that additions to trails could not be done by, could not be done administratively. It takes an act of Congress to put two feet addition to a national historic trail. Uh, in two thousand nine, to address the limitations that I've, um, this, I've referenced, the President Obama signed Pres- uh, Public Law one eleven dash eleven, the Omnibus Public Lands Management Act, which authorized, uh, further study to many new components, both of the Oregon Trail and other national historic trails. That study, a draft of it was finished in September of twenty seventeen, the final in January of twenty twenty, which you might remember is precisely when the COVID pandemic hit. It caused the, the, among many distractions, the, the fate of this public law was one. There were many segments across several trails that were studied. Fourteen met the revised criteria for inclusion, that they be sufficiently known and recognizable in history and on the ground, that they were nationally significant and relevant to public creation, uh, public recreation and historic interest. Uh, thus, since January seventeenth, twenty twenty, the door has been opened for Congress to adopt legislation, formally recognizing any or all of these trail, national historic trail components. To this date, to my knowledge, no member of Congress has sponsored a bill to accept any addition in law. So point of this resolution is to try to gin up some public interest. Again, the, the historic value of, of the underlying proposition, I hope is clear uh, in the, in the body of the resolution. But I did want to just speak to potential productive outcomes. Again, following up on what Mr. Denny said, it would allow the installation of these trailblazer signs. You've probably seen these. There's the, the, they're called the pregnant triangle. It's the symbol, it's the same symbol for all the national historic trails, Lewis and Clark. That's what it's called. Uh, and, uh, uh, but maybe other interpretive work, but it would be nice to imagine seeing signs like this blazing a trail to Brewery Falls Park, which of course was the end of the Bush Simmons Trail, the, the, the trail that the Simmons Bush Party blazed to Puget Sound in eighteen forty-five. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. I urge your adoption. It was our hope that, that we, if we can get this in front of the legislature, we might motivate the legislature to motivate our state congressional delegation. And we can get the ball rolling for this important addition to our national historic trail system. Thank you.
Uh, any questions? Councilmember Dahlhoff?
Thank you, Mayor. I do want to thank you for when this was presented at general government to updating it acknowledged other peoples and histories, uh, before ours in this area. So I want to thank you for that, that update and that inclusion.
Those are very constructive suggestions. And, uh, I'm, uh, since I'm kind of in a valedictory mood, I really enjoyed being i- in, in council with the general government committee. I was the initial chairman of that committee when it was founded in the nineteen eighties. So that was another old home week moment.
Thank you.
Any, any other?
I have a quick question.
Councilmember, uh, Gabi?
This trail.
Does Councilmember Gabi, can you bring your microphone a little closer? Thank you.
Sir, this trade, does, does it predate, uh, Washington state to?
Yes, um, what, Washington became a state in eighteen eighty-nine. And so as I, in fact, I was on a radio show today and I, I likened the fact that Tomwater is the founding American settler colony of what became the state of Washington. And I think that's historically justified.
So if Fort Vancouver is where the United States, uh, ended, and this was Canada, you, what you just said is not true according to the history book that I read. Cause I used to live in Oregon. Um, they will, um, the, uh, Oregon Trail ended up in Astoria or Seaside, Oregon. And there was no mention of a trade going from that side coming to this side of the United States.
Fort Vancouver was established in eighteen twenty-five by the Hudson Bay Company, which is, which was a British chartered corporation.
Right.
The H B C did everything it could for more than twenty years to discourage American settlement north of the Columbia River. Because the boundary between Great Britain, Canada, if you will, and the United States had not been settled yet, wouldn't be until eighteen forty-six, a year after the Bush Simmons party was here. And so, um, Fort Vancouver is an important site. It was certainly a settlement, but it wasn't an American colonial founding element. And I dare say, Councilmember Agabi, that one should never rely on a lot of public information in Oregon to be necessarily inclusive and reflective of the reality of Washington state history.
Oregon was a state before Washington became a state. So I'm going by.
Yes, that is true. Yes, Oregon did become a state before the, thirty years before the state of Washington. That's correct.
Point taken.
Pardon?
Point taken.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, Councilmember Swarthout?
Um, thank you for your work on this. This is amazing, uh, to be able to preserve this part of our history. Um, so I just wanted, you were talking about when we adopt this resolution. Uh, are you proposing that it, to go to this, uh, legislature or do we need that and then move it forward?
I, my specific request, and this was discussed in committee by, uh, both the general government committee and at the historic commission, was that it be forwarded to the Thurston County Legislative Delegation. I've already talked with, um, Ann Cook about getting, doing some advocacy and lobbying and some other forum, uh, before the legislature, hoping they'll take it up. I think the mere fact that this gets some, does some discussion here, let alone at the legislative level, I think will raise the profile of the issue and might move it forward finally, as it is an opportunity, uh, waiting to happen. And the, the length of time is not unusual. I mean, uh, I was party to an extension of the Lewis and Clark Trail uh, twenty years ago, and that's also hard to believe because people thought the Lewis and Clark Trail ended in the state of Oregon at Fort Clatsop. Actually, the terminal westward point for the Lewis and Clark Trails on the Washington side of the river at the Long Beach Peninsula by Cape Disappointment. These are, these are, this is the, this is the legacy, quite honestly, Councilmember Gabi, of the state of Washington having lingered in the shadow of the state of, we don't think of it that way today. But Washington territory was a failure in many respects for thirty years, until the transcontinental railroads connected us. And that's when our cities and population grew. Oregon was a dominant, uh, uh, overpoweringly important or dominating economic and cultural influence in the region. And all of our early history notions of what's important about our history, quite frankly, is Oregon centric. And I've spent, as Cook could attest, I've spent fifty years trying to counterveil the effect of that with some success.
Right? Einstein.
Any other, uh, council member, uh, I'll tell her.
Uh, thanks, Mayor. Or, Oregon may have been a state thirty years before Washington, but you, you were, you were a council member ten years before I was born. So I, I, I find it fitting and unless there are any other questions, I, I'd be honored to make a motion that we adopt resolution number R two zero two two dash zero one three regarding.
And I second.
I have a question.
So.
Did you, uh, we'll have a discussion. Did you have something before the motion?
Yes, please.
Go ahead.
So I do have a question for you. So it's by understanding, I've only lived here eight plus years, that Old Highway ninety-nine was part of the Oregon Trail. Are we going to have designation with signs for that as well?
Well, I hope so. And, um, we've talked about that at the Historic Preservation Commission a lot too. In fact, uh, Councilmember Schneider is right on the point here. Um, what was initially. What was initially a Native American indigenous trail from the Colme River basin, the Puget Sound, later became the Oregon Trail, blazed by the Bush and Simmons Party, which became the Pacific Coast Highway, which became Highway 99. And so, the, in fact, I have some maps right here, some going back to the 1920s, that specifically delineate that. So my vision is, in fact, kind of a series of signage when you come into the southern element of the city on Old 99. And I'm an old enough person, do people still, does everyone still refer to it as Old 99? I know people my generation. That's good.
I'm not your generation, Dave.
So I, but it would be nice to see an Oregon Trail, trailblazer sign with a historic Highway 99 sign. You'll see those all over Oregon. Again, case in point, you'll see those. Is there a theme here, Councilmember Dahlhoff?
I so enjoy your visits.
And so, yeah, that's, as new interpretive signage at the Bush Homestead, down to Brewery Falls Park, there's a lot can be done here to call attention to this vital part and quite distinctive part of our state's history. And I think, I think it's worth recognizing at the federal level. I know we all do it locally, but it takes an act of Congress to get these signs on Old Highway 99.
Great, so we have a motion by Councilmember Althausser, second by Councilmember Jefferson. Any other discussion on the motion? Great presentation, thank you.
It's been a thrill to be here tonight, thank you.
With that, I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimous, thank you very, very much.
Point of personal privilege.
Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Althausser.
Thanks, I just do think in recognition of his good work that our friend David does deserve a city pencil.
Oh, my God.
These are new.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
An orange and black.
Never satisfied.
These chairs do not roll very well on this carpet. Okay, so now we are going to go to the item that was pulled off, the consent agenda item, which is the grant agreement with the Department of Ecology for the Septic to Sewer Conversion Program. And I believe that staff member Dan Smith is online, which he can go ahead and do a presentation or explain. Councilmember Dahlhoff, did you have a specific question? Or you just want, go ahead and have Dan go ahead and?
Thank you, Mayor. It's a, Dan, if you could do what you emailed, that's just a great, I just think this is a great idea, a great concept. What came about is I was talking to Eileen, the Chair of Public Works, if, did it come up regarding the conversion and then the new bill, right? So the cost of current septic maintenance versus the conversion, and what will be the estimated costs for the residents? And that's how it came up. And I just thought, other, my other seatmates would like to know more about this, because I think there's opportunity to expand this. So I just wanted to hear from Dan.
Well, Councilmember Lieta, Councilmember Dahlhoff, Council, thank you for the opportunity for this tonight. It's hard to go after Dave McCandry, you know, I hope I'll be as, a fraction of as informative and engaging as he is on this, on this work. Let me, background on the project itself. This conversation with Vel Coleman really began in 2019, when they're, they started having some issues with their water system provider. They have private well, or they had private wells on site. And they approached the city to consider connecting to the city's water system to serve the mobile home park there. And during that conversation, you know, we entertained the conversation around conversion of their septic system to a public sanitary sewer. Back, going back even 10 years far, or a few years farther than that, about 10 years ago, regionally, the cities of Lacey, Olympia, Thurston County, and Tombwater had the conversation about urban density septic systems and the risk that they can pose to groundwater supplies and drinking water supplies and surface waters. And through that, through that work led by Thurston County Public Health to look at the data and the science around that, grew the, kind of the regional septic summit. And Vel Coleman, the Vel Coleman neighborhood, Mobile Home Park, was identified as one of the higher-risk neighborhoods for urban density septic systems and groundwater pollution. And so, really looked through that program, looked at various incentives and what were costs that were expected for conversion of septic systems for not only single-family residences, but, you know, neighborhoods and properties such as mobile home, mobile home parks. And, you know, as we, as we continued that work, you know, we were looking for opportunities to partner with somebody. And as I mentioned, so through this conversation in 2019 with Vel Coleman, they acknowledged that they're very interested in that, and they have an interest in protecting water quality and, you know, providing some assurances to their, to their property or to the residents within their park for the, for their utility services. So, converting over to water, I mean, as, as we kind of acknowledged through this, mobile home parks are certainly sometimes challenged financially in terms of how they can afford to make some of these fixes. And water system connection certainly wasn't a small cost. To really make that a viable opportunity for them, we had to seek additional state funding. We were granted a $30,000 grant for that work from the state to help facilitate that conversion. Water system costs were a little bit less for them than sewer systems. They were looking at approximately, you know, $1.5 to $2 million on conversion costs for septic systems. That really represents a significant financial hurdle for not only the property owners and the park managers, but also the residents of that park. So, you know, we said, okay, you know what? Maybe now is not the right time. Let the city go back and do some research, see if we can find some partnerships within the community, or look for some grant funding that might be available. And so, you know, over the next year, we were able to work with the Department of Ecology and Secure and Grant for about $1 million. That really was not just a conversion grant. This project in front of you tonight for approval is looking at, this is a model project for other mobile home parks, or, you know, not only in our community, but regionally statewide. So, you know, the grant in front of us tonight is looking at, you know, one, yes, costs for, you know, for construction and conversion. You know, what is the feasibility of it? What are the costs, both pre and post-construction? And those post-construction costs include, you know, things like, you know, the ongoing maintenance of the systems on site, as well as the monthly costs of all treatment and conveyance that the residents would, would bear, just like a single-family house. Mobile home park is slightly different than a mobile, than a single-family residential, where we have a single connection. There are 39 units at Vel Coleman, and so there will be consolidated down to one connection. And so there would be kind of a master, kind of a master connection to the city's sewer system. And so, you know, we need to understand, you know, what the costs are for that, not only to the owners and the managers of the park, but to the residents. Part of this process also includes a social marketing-style campaign, where we can better understand what the benefits and the barriers are to making these conversions. As we, you know, to have this conversation with other mobile home parks in our community, we want to make sure that we can help them understand and see what the benefits to conversion are, as well as, you know, what the barriers are. And if we have a better understanding of what the barriers are, we can help develop programs, design programs, that will help overcome those barriers. And, you know, and additionally, what are some of the motivators? For us, you know, there is definitely a water quality benefit, you know, for us and a motivator to make that happen. So it's kind of an all-encompassing project, two phases. One, to look at, you know, the feasibility, what are the design development and construction costs? What are the, what are the barriers and benefits to a conversion program such as this? If we can identify, you know, enough of the, you know, enough of the motivators and incentives to help the owners and the managers and the residents move forward on a project like this, then the remainder of the grant, a significant portion of the grant would be dedicated toward the actual conversion costs of this program, you know, for this program. So, you know, we were really excited that Vel Coleman was willing to partner with us. This is not a, this is not going to be a quick project. This is something that, you know, we know is going to take us some time, probably about two years. The first, you know, six months, six to eight months is really kind of going through that social marketing-style campaign to understand and document, you know, those motivations and those barriers, you know, to moving forward on a project like this. Once that's complete, then we can really start taking a closer look at what are the physical constructions, costs, the permits, the timelines, what's necessary to see this project move forward. And with all that said and done, you know, if this, if this project can pencil out for the, for the property owners and the residents that live there, we'd like to, you know, they would like to move forward with construction and make that conversion happen. One of the, the potential outcomes of this project is looking at, you know, as I said, this is a master meter type program where we're looking at for a neighborhood connection versus a single-family resident connection. The city of Tombwater does have a lifeline discount, utility discount program that provides a significant discount on utility costs for senior and senior disabled and disabled residents that are on fixed incomes or significantly low incomes. So we want to be able to see if we can apply that to a master meter. In general, it's a difficult prospect, but we do have, we kind of have considered a program where we can develop an agreement where we work with the property owners on an annual basis to determine what percentage of, of customers, residents within their, within their property would qualify for this program, and then develop an agreement to work with them on an annual basis to make sure that, you know, as that number increases or decreases over time, that they get the appropriate discounts applied to their system versus a singular, a single utility, a flat rate bill, so to speak. This lifeline program is available to single-family residents. The extension, when you have 39 units, does not necessarily apply. And so we want to look at a way to maybe overcome that as a barrier. And so again, this project would look at that as a barrier and say, we developed some solutions to help us overcome that as well, to make this an affordable project for all. Just as an aside, one of the notes from the 2015 Septics recognized that, you know, the costs for septic system maintenance currently, you know, while might be masked as zero based on your lease rates or your rental rates, if you're in an apartment building, or if you're in a mobile home park, you might not see a, you know, septic, septic management fee or a septic replacement fee. But they are, they are inclusive in there, because septic systems have life cycle costs, and at some point, they need to be replaced. And generally, if a property owner or property manager is doing their due diligence when they're setting their lease rates, they're incorporating those costs in there. And so, you know, what we have found through that previous work was that, that life cycle cost on a monthly basis is compatible, is comparable to the wastewater fees charged by the city as well as law. So, you know, you know, we anticipate that, you know, we're hopeful. And again, we haven't done the financial economic forecast yet. That is part of this process. But we're hopeful that we see that that is compatible, that we're not seeing escalated lease rates moving into the future. That will be, that will be part of the conversation. And again, if we identify, you know, a process to overcome one of those barriers, which is affordability for folks on fixed incomes, then we look at a process to help provide a mechanism to get through that as well. So, I think that is certainly all the notes I've had on this right now. If there are any other particular questions, I'm happy to answer that.
Any questions? No, I think that was a very good explanation. It was a very informative, Councilmember Kathy.
Thanks for that, Dan. We've been talking about conversions for a long time. Yeah. Where is this mobile home park located?
It's on 70th Avenue on the west side of I-5.
The reason I ask that is, is the location for something like this impact our ability to do it or create barriers? Or some would be easier depending on where they, where they are geographically?
Only, only as to the extent of where utilities exist. We do have sewer lines both along Little Rock Road and 70th Israel Road right there on the, across their front edge. So that, that reduces significant cost to mobile home parks when we have infrastructure that's immediately available to them. If they were farther away, though, you know, now you're adding the construction costs of bringing a sewer line to the development, which, which can add some significant cost. So we're fortunate in the sense that we do have sewer available to this property currently. Good.
Any other questions? Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved, this is Lieta.
I'll second, this is Eileen.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Dahlhoff, second by Councilmember Swarthout. Any discussion on the motion? With that, I will call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you very much for your time, Dan. That was a great explanation.
Thank you.
All right. Looking back in the agenda, so next are committee reports. And first one is Public Health and Safety, and Councilmember Dahlhoff.
Thank you, Mayor. Public Health and Safety met on January 10th. That feels so long ago. We talked about the update to the municipal code, which was in our consent agenda tonight. We discussed code enforcement program update. And the majority of the time of that meeting was regarding the Police Strategic Staffing Plan for 2023 to 2028. And we heard from Dr. Oliver Bowers, who is our department analyst for the police and who really has a passion for academic research. I'm glad someone does. What was interesting, and what will be coming back down the road to a work session for all of us to discuss in here, is the Tombwater Police Department staffing model, right? To really assess the current state of where we are right now, and then to forecast where we need to be. So I just wanted to share that the elements that they're looking at for the staffing model, which you will hear about down the road, is calls for service, average time for officer involvement, multipliers, and complicating factors, minimum thresholds used. This will all make sense when you get an update of the work session. Proactive policing time buffer and accounting for time off, training, vacation, et cetera, where it takes about 2.2 officers to staff for one patrol element for 365 days coverage. The reason why I'm listing all that is it was really comprehensive. There's a lot of elements go into that staffing model. We're really looking at the current state and the future state and identifying that, right? So more to come. It was an informative agenda. He went through all of the elements, Dr. Bowers, who is a rock star, frankly. And so it was, it was really good bidding.
Great, thank you. Now we're going to go to General Government Committee, Councilmember Althausser.
Thank you, Mayor. The General Government Committee met on January 11th. We discussed first and foremost our, our meeting time moving forward. We've meeting at 2:00 PM, but we changed it to 8:00 AM. And I would like to thank Councilmember Kathy for her graciousness in, in supporting our time change moving forward. We also discussed two important housing measures. As you all know, we passed some of our tenant protections measures in late December. Our next step in that, you know, there were a lot of conversations about how, how do we make sure this information actually gets out to the public? How do we make sure we, we do enforcement meaningfully? And our next couple of measures will be regarding rental housing registration as well as dispute resolution agreement and contract. And we discussed those at the meeting. Finally, we discussed our long-range planning work program. And our next meeting will be on February 8th at 8:00 AM, bright and early.
Thank you. Next is Public Works Committee, Councilmember Swarthout.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. The Public Works Committee will be meeting on Thursday, January 19th. And on our agenda, trying to get to my council here. Many of the items that we did talk about, or we did pass tonight, were on the agenda, were reflected in the meeting that we had on the 5th. And for some reason, I'm not able to pull up my agenda here, so it's not letting me do that. Oh, and he has it up. Thank you so much. Okay, we have, we'll be discussing the Tombwater Hill Trails Crosby Connector Project closeout. And we'll also be, have a presentation on the Source Control Program. We'll also have a presentation on the Lead and Copper Testing Program Report and a discussion on the transportation grants. And also, we'll be discussing the Fuel Tax Agreement with Transportation Improvement Board for the Tombwater Boulevard Interchange. And that will be at 8:00 on Thursday morning.
Great, thank you. Budget and finance has not met. So now we will go to the Mayor, City Administrator. So now we will go to the mayor, city administrator report and John, do you want to start?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of the council, just very quickly, and I hope I'm not stealing the mayor's thunder here. Spent some time with her and with Chief Wicks today and some other folks from the police department attending the first basic law enforcement academy graduation I've been to in like three years or four years, something like that since way before COVID. And it was great to be back and we had just an outstanding police officer, Samuel Hammond, who has graduated, is Tumwater's newest police officer. He was the class president, so I actually had an opportunity to, to speak, elected by his peers. And maybe the most touching thing and sort of a sign of sort of his leadership abilities and camaraderie with his coworkers is that he is a former Army Ranger. And about a dozen of his fellow former Rangers showed up in support of him to his graduation, and I had never seen something like that before. And it was pretty cool. So I think we have an outstanding new addition and it's great to see those in person and great to see folks being added to the police department. So thank you.
Thank you. So I don't have any committee assignment reports on, everybody's been off for the last few weeks. But I did attend the mayor's forum, A W C Mayor's Forum last Thursday, which was an all day event, which was great when all the mayors can get together and discuss things similar, you know, some of the things that we all experience. One of the, on Friday, then the mayors had a meeting with Governor Inslee. And a lot of that had to do with proposed funding for housing and what are we going to do to kind of build our way out of this housing crisis? So it was very interesting for the fact that, you know, we had large, larger cities and very small cities. And one of the takeaways from that was, please don't do a blanket because every city, different size, has different issues. So try to make it where there's some flexibility within the city. And the request was for direct funding directly to the communities as opposed to going through counties. So that was a very beneficial meeting and, and it's just been since January, very, very busy times. So very busy. So I will then turn it over to council reports. And I'm going to start on the dyad going this way. So I will start with Charlie, Councilmember Snyder, and go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. So I did attend the Public Works Meeting along with Councilmember Swarthoff and Althouser. And that meeting was held on January fifth, and that was actually the first meeting of the year, two thousand twenty three. And I will be attending the upcoming Climate Action Steering Committee Retreat next week. I did attend the January eleventh Thurston County Chamber Forum, which the mayor mentioned. And it was titled State of the Community Mayors. And it was consisted of all the mayors, mayors from the local jurisdictions. And they did talk about homelessness, affordable housing, economic issues and upcoming projects for two thousand twenty three. Tomorrow, I will be attending the Tumwater Area Chamber of Commerce. And our mayor and John Doan and Austin Ramirez will be there at the S P S C C, and that will be at noon. And they will be talking about economic issues and other issues about our city. On Thursday, January nineteenth, Grant Gilmore, City of Tumwater's Water Resource Specialist, will be making a presentation at the Heritage Distilling Company. And that will be entitled, A Journey Down the Deschutes, Then and Now. It's free, but you have to be twenty one because it is at the Heritage Distilling Company. Okay? Needless to say. On Friday, January twentieth, the Tumwater Youth Program will be holding the Tumwater Middle School Event from seven to nine thirty. And it's for the grade school students and there will be free shirts hand out for those kids. And I believe that's my report.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Jefferson.
On the seventh of December, I attended the Thurston County DUI Drug Court New Beginning Ceremony, hosted by the Honorable John Skidner, Thurston County DUI Superior Court Judge. And there were six graduates of this program. It was emotional and it was powerful just to hear their stories of addiction and how they're currently fighting addiction to remain sober and productive citizens. I made a brief statement on why I wanted to attend the ceremony as a policymaker and just as a member of the Public Health and Safety Committee. On the eighth of December, attended our L E O F F Disability Board. And we had the election of two members. And Ricky Sap was elected and Councilmember Peta Agabi was elected for a two-year term. And the ma, the mayor was saying earlier that on the sixteenth of January, I attended the Martin Luther King Countywide Event in Lacey, where I represented our great city. And it, it, it was a wonderful event. We had representatives from Olympia there, from Lacey there, and I had the honor of reading our proclamation and letting the audience member know what a proclamation is and, you know, what, what we did. And it, it was, it was a great event. On seventeen January, today, as a matter of fact, I attended, let's see, another meeting here where we discussed destination marketing versus destination management. Mayor, I'm kind of long here because we haven't had a meeting in a while, but we discussed short-term rentals increasing fifty-two percent. Our website performance is doing quite well. One, I would say negative we have is they need to start getting more aggressive about bringing business into, into the community. There's leads coming in. However, they're not booking. Okay, so that's saying that we need to go after more business. So that's a negative. They understand that and Annette is going to be working on that more. It came down to multitasking of one individual. So now they're, they're going to be looking for new lead generation service and they're just going to revamp that a little bit. So the priorities for the year for Olympia and beyond is maximize our brand, increase economic impact and improve the destination experience. And that's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Agabi.
So I believe on December eighth is when we had a training in Lacey. Was, wasn't it December eighth? That we were attended, Mayor and John were there. Yeah, so my takeaway was, it was a forum that showcased people who were either forced elected into public office within this local area or people who are breaking the glass ceiling, been into office in this local area. So from my standpoint, I think it was more of show and tell and said, this is what we could do if we move forward. So I think that was good. But the, the only meeting that I have attended that I saw through was last Wednesday, and that was at the regional, the Regional Transportation Board. And for that, my takeaway, I think is, I don't know if this would affect us down the road because we, Tumwater received a letter from G P B that we were awarded money for the air street runabout, crossroad construction project. So because we have that award and one of our staff's presentation is about an award that the city of Olympia had received to do pavement. And they had made some amendments to that project. And because they did that in enough of funds to be released to them, there has to be a series of amendment that needs to be done. So for example, I'm reading here, it says, so for the West Side pavement preservation, Olympia made an active amended amendment, and that would trigger a state improvement program amendment that would cost that money to be released. And and from what I'm reading here, the, the purpose of the R T, which is the so for the twenty twenty thirty two twenty six transportation program, which is the R T, which is where Lacey is making this amendment to that project, which is going to not cost them to do an amended documentation. And then for the R T and for the state, for that money to be released, it says here that for any money that have federal funding or that wash that project or original significance, regardless of funding source, once an amendment has been made, they have to do this two-step, two-step amendment. So hopefully, our, our award wouldn't have to do that. We haven't spent any money yet. So hopefully, we will. I know that Mary Hames is our staff and she's keeping an eye on this. So keep my fingers crossed. Hopefully, we're not making an amendment to what we've done. So we won't have to do this double amendment. That's all I got.
Thank you. Councilmember Dahlhoff.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things to note regarding Thurston County nine one one Communications, which we call TCOM. You might have noticed in the news, some other break-ins in other counties of like substations, right? Well, TCOM is now experiencing break-ins and vandalism of their radio sites, their towers. So two sites have been burglarized, one twice, one one time. One, the cost of estimated over fifteen thousand dollars. One, it was less than their deduction, right? So, so we're seeing more and more of that. And with this past election, we have a new Thurston County Sheriff who attended this meeting for the first time at TCOM. And so that discussion of surveillance and routes and visual aids and security and what that would look like has come up. So that was sad to hear, but it's happening more and more in our community. We also had, along with Councilmember Swarthout and Althouser, the Olympia-Tumwater Regional Fire Authority Planning Committee hearing to discuss the benefit charge. We passed the resolution today. Coming up, I have Senior Housing Action Team. I have TCOM again, Thurston County Open Response Task Force, which more and more overdoses are being reported and identified in our community. So I'll have a, a larger update next time about the strategic goals and how that could impact Tumwater, right? I also have law enforcement assisted diversion, which ties in to Thurston County Open Response Task Force and what that looks like in referrals from Tumwater Police and Tumwater Fire. And then I also have lots. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Althouser.
Thank you, Mayor. As, as Councilmember Dahloff reported, I attended the Regional Fire Authority this past Monday or a week before yesterday. And then so far as the Regional Housing Council goes, I, I was unable to attend the meeting last week, but Councilmember Kathy did attend on, on my behalf as the alternate. So I want to, I want to thank her for, for attendance of that meeting. But my understanding from a debrief of, of what was discussed was that there was a proposal for a development for about a hundred and sixty units of permanently affordable housing. It was a robust discussion in front of the council, and there were a lot of questions. No decisions were, were made about any of that, that there was a funding ask. Essentially, the request was that we sort of delay that and then come back and discuss again at the, the next meeting. That's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Forthout.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. On Friday, January thirteenth, I attended the TRPC meeting. And on our action items, we approved the airport opposition, the letter in opposition to the proposed site for the airport. And we also approved the TRPC operating budget and the pay and classification plan. We approved the human service transportation plan. And then we received a presentation on the regional transportation plan, the two thousand twenty two amendment cycle.
Great. Councilmember Kathy.
Thank you. Just going to mention the meetings that I've had in two thousand twenty three. So the first one was the Solid Waste Advisory Council and then the Olympic Region Clean Air Authority. And I will mention one thing about that with the support of our fire chief and our fire department weighing in on a public hearing on recreational fires, which I've mentioned over time here, we were doing some rulemaking around that. And we voted on it and unanimously decided to change that rule. And it affects Tumwater. It's a, a rule that probably very few people even know exists because we're not allowed to have fires in our backyards to roast our marshmallows and things like that. That's actually against a rule, a statute in Tumwater. And it was imposed by the Olympic Clean Air Agency years ago due to some of the pollution in the air. And it's been on there and been on the books and so forth. So that will call for a change in, in Tumwater. I think a welcome change. And then I also attended the General Government Committee. And as you heard, the Regional Housing Council. And one of the statements I made there was I wish that Michael was here today. And it was heard by other people as I said it while I still had my, I was still unmuted because I wanted people to know that I didn't think we should be making decisions that daily. Definitely should not be making big decisions and having, doing big things without Michael Althouser present. So that ended it. We didn't make any decisions. That wasn't the whole reason. I, I felt, I felt good about calling out, calling out Michael and his, his expertise. And he's very well respected that committee. So he threw me to the wolves. I said, I wish he was here. So that's my report.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else for the good of order? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We are, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.